We'll have to call the special meeting to order. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the Burlington City Council meeting. Hopefully your visit will be pleasant. And also I'd like to remind you to turn off any electronic devices. This time I'd like to call Don Starling's indication.
First by our heads, dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for all the blessings of life. We thank you for our city and its employees, its citizens. We pray that thou will guide us in our decisions and be with us in the days ahead. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Also I'd like to introduce to you before we get started our agenda, Mr. Ellis Hankins. Ellis is from the League of Municipalities in Raleigh, and we welcome you tonight. Thank you. Also, Mr. Mayor is a few minutes late. He is coming back from Greensboro and got caught in some traffic, so he will join us shortly. The purpose of tonight's special call meeting is to openly discuss the City of Burlington's Ordinance Number 08-19, which reads as follows: "Ordinance prohibiting the solicitation of occupants of vehicles being operated upon public streets and highways." Just as a quick reminder to the audience, this is not a public hearing. It's just a discussion between council and staff, so we appreciate you understanding that before we get started. At this time I'd call Mr. Owen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while we're here tonight is obviously the ordinance which the mayor has referenced earlier, the council passed several months ago. Since that time, the state legislature, by adoption of House Bill 942, has passed a law that would basically allow the distribution and sale of newspapers in the public median. So where we are in terms, and I'll recognize Chief Williams in a minute, is we face a dilemma in the sense that we have a local ordinance that this council has adopted, and there's been a state law passed since that time that is in some ways in conflict with our local ordinance. As a staff and certainly as the police department, Mr. Mayor as we come in, we really need some direction in terms of where the council wishes for us to go. The ordinance is on the books and by law, but the police chief has to implement the ordinance we have now unless we're giving some different direction by the council here tonight. So with that, I'd like to recognize Chief Williams, and he can lay out the dilemma that we have, and we're looking for direction as we go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time and consideration of this matter tonight. I really don't have a lot to add to what Mr. Owen just said, other than, as you said, the passage of Senate Bill 942 amending that statute, 20-175D, does appear to be in conflict with our city ordinance regarding street solicitation. And therefore, having been charged with the duty to enforce our ordinances as well as state law, it creates a situation of having to ask, where do we go from here? In other words, we have a state statute that appears to be in conflict with our ordinance, which was enacted in June. So I'm here tonight actually seeking some guidance or direction from you as a council as to how you wish to proceed with enforcement of our ordinance.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Sometimes I think it's, I know we've had very good and competent legal counsel with Mr. Ward. I look back at how we came to address this issue. We started a long time ago, not this council, but the previous two councils, addressing some of the issues that were concerned about the public safety aspect of folks in our streets. And it wasn't just the newspaper, frankly, it was a lot of the people that were beggars or street solicitors out near Huffman Mill Road. And previous city councils, only looking to Mr. Ward, and we had worked with Mr. Ward, we were concerned about adopting an ordinance to address the safety issues, but at the same time adopt something that would be constitutional. I think we have actually done that. I think we have accomplished that. Mr. Ward, I just want to comment, I think over the period of the last two and a half years, there's been some exceptional, the term lawyering, and I think you've done a wonderful job there of directing us through the legislative process, local bill, enabling legislation to address these issues. But now the legislature has come back. I think it would be, and Mr. Mayor, I recognize this is not a public hearing, okay? But I think it would be helpful, and I don't want to blindside him, but I think it would be helpful. We have Ellis Hankins here. He is the executive director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and I think he can give us some background information on the legislative process that has taken place down in Raleigh on this issue over the years. I think we might benefit from that, to understand the history of it as far as the state legislation is concerned. If the council would like to hear from me, I would...
Anyone who have any objections to Mr. Hankins speaking? No?
I don't. Do you mind, Ellis?
I do not.
Please come forward then, Mr. Hankins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be here. I've not been to one of your city council meetings in a good while. The North Carolina League of Municipalities, for those who are not as familiar, is just simply the association of all of our cities and towns. And one of the most prominent things that league and our staff members do is work in the General Assembly with you and your elected counterparts across the state, and speak often on your behalf under the policies that all of our membership have adopted. And this specific issue has been the subject of discussion among our membership for a while. What is the extent of authority that the General Assembly has provided to city councils to regulate activities, business activities, sales, solicitations, charitable solicitations and others, on and in the streets and highways? Both highways on the state highway system, on which you have less authority, and streets on the municipal system, over which you have a pretty good grant of authority under some other statutes. Let me take you back tonight to the year 2005, when the General Assembly, and I'll make this brief, and then I'm going to have to answer any questions you have, and I'm not here, let me say, as your legal advisor. I used to be a lawyer, I've now become a manager, and here's your legal advisor, and a good and knowledgeable one. But in 2005, about the time that the Burlington City Council, I guess, was beginning seriously to consider this issue in Burlington, some other city councils were also, Bob Ward started doing some work on the possibility of a local bill to be introduced by members of your local legislative delegation. The difference between a statewide bill and a local bill is if a local bill is introduced, it only applies typically to one or just a handful of municipalities or counties, and the General Assembly often in that way with a local act grants additional authority to one or more towns, as opposed to a statewide act, which for cities usually is in Chapter 168, and it grants general authority to city councils to deal with an issue or to adopt an ordinance and enforce it. We're talking here about the highway regulatory statutes in Chapter 20. Before 2005, as I said, cities had very little regulatory authority over state highways in this area that you're talking about. So your city attorney started to work on the local bill. The lawyers on our staff assisted some with that. The bill was introduced, started its way through the process as a local bill. About that same time, some members of our staff who do legislative work saw an opportunity to work with some legislators to get a provision put into state law, and took that opportunity. And in fact, both your local bill and the statewide provision were enacted by the General Assembly in 2005. Both became law, and your local act, as far as I am concerned, still is good law and provides good authority. So bear that thought in mind. Well, so 2007 came along, the General Assembly reconvened, a bill was introduced on the Senate side, obviously Senate Bill 942, a statewide bill, to basically undo the statewide grant of authority that had occurred in 2005. It said nothing, did nothing about the Burlington Local Act. That fairly broad bill, Senate Bill 942, actually passed the Senate in a very broad form, and it basically took away your authority and the authority of every other city councils to do much in any way to regulate sale of newspapers on state highways, but didn't affect your local act. So that bill went to the House, 2007, went to a House committee, and it stayed there after the session adjourned in 2007. The 2008 session this year, though, the so-called short session, was a continuation of the 2007 session. Bill was still alive for consideration, since it had passed one house. We thought it might not move out of the committee, but one day the committee chair spoke to our general counsel, who's our chief legislative lobbyist, and said, "I want to let you know, this bill, very likely some version of it, is going to move out of this committee. We know your membership is opposed to it. I want to let you know some version's going to come out, and you probably need to do some work on it." And so our general counsel, knowing that, made the judgment, we often are in this situation, do we continue to oppose a bill that our membership opposes and maybe get run over? In spite of our opposition, the bill become law? Or do we do some work and negotiate and try to narrow the scope of the bill, make a bad bill better? Well, we did the second one of those things, and agreed on a version of the bill that is much more narrow than the version that passed the Senate in 2007. It says, and this is the version that became law and that the governor recently signed, it says, "No local government may enact or enforce any ordinance that prohibits engaging in the distribution of newspapers on the non-traveled portion of any street or highway, except when those distribution activities impede the normal movement of traffic on the street or highway." So your police department could pay attention, could videotape and could get evidence in hand, but that takes real enforcement resources, and that's difficult. It's really difficult to do. So that's the state law. But let me just say again, your Burlington Local Act remains good law, and I believe gives you all good authority to do what you all choose to do. And this is just another one of those legislative decisions that are up to you all as the city council, in my view.
Any questions for Mr. Hankins?
Ellis, in all ways, this is kind of a good civics lesson for folks, in my mind, because this is an interaction between the legislative branch and the judicial branch at both the state level, and of course, we had a lawsuit that was filed against us by the Times News, and that was a good opportunity there for us to see by way of a proceeding there, temporary restraining order. I don't know, I don't think you've seen the opinion there, but...
I certainly know about it.
Yeah, a temporary restraining order and a preliminary injunction, where it's clear that that federal district court judge over in Winston-Salem sees that, sees what the issues are, and that there are constitutional problems with enforcing an ordinance that we have unequally between people. We tried to draft an ordinance, and this, Mr. Ward's insistence, this council struggled with trying to draft an ordinance that was as narrow as possible, but also tried to nail the issue and keep focused on what we felt was the concern, and that is public safety. And I believe that federal district court judge, in that preliminary opinion, he went far beyond the subject matter of a TRO, and it's pretty clear how he felt about the substantive issue there. And then, of course, the civics lesson here is, is that this happens all the time. When the legislative branch, be it the city council, or the state legislature, or the Congress, will pass something, judiciary rules on its constitutionality or some other issue, and the legislature in turn comes back and has to address that the next session. And that's what you've had happen here, even though there wasn't a constitutional issue down there. It simply was a very powerful lobby, the press association, that weighed in and had impact. Now the question in my mind is this, and I'm going to ask you this, address this to you, if you don't mind. It appears to me, and the chief, I think, recognizes this, we're on the horns of a dilemma here, unless I'm misreading this. If we proceed forward with our ordinance, obviously, we're going to get sued again by the newspaper, by, for, you know, the state legislature has presumably occupied this field, come in and tried to amend. Of course, I recognize that on a short-term basis, I believe we have pretty good authority. Our enabling legislation, our charter amendment basically gives us the authority to do that, but that's going to only, in my mind, and you can help me with this, it's probably only going to, the same forces down in the legislature that prevailed to amend the whole statute will come right back in and do the same thing to our local ordinance, enabling legislation, would they not?
Well, I meant to say, and should have, that this whole area of law is fraught with constitutional issues. It's difficult legally. Your city attorney has done a great job leading you all through this, as a matter of legislative authority and constitutional law. Next legislative session, when the General Assembly convenes in January 2009, any bill is eligible, any bill any member wants to introduce, and that certainly includes any local bill. Any one member of your local delegation certainly could introduce a local bill to repeal the 2005 Local Act. And the way it works around the legislature traditionally with a local bill is the other members who are not from Alamance County are very likely to do whatever the members of your legislative delegation decide to do if they agree with each other. So yes, there is certainly a possibility that there would be a bill to repeal the 2005 Act, and who knows what the outcome would be.
Well, you know, I think it's pretty, it's, I believe our, even if we proceeded forward in, I'm just talking out loud for the council here a little bit, even if we proceeded forward to enforce our current ordinance, I think as soon as the legislature got back in session, I believe one or more folks in our delegation would probably, who supported the statewide bill, by the way, even though...
Two of the three.
Two of the three, even though we had had contact with them and asked them, you know, to consider the public safety issues here.
It could simply be a matter of discussion between you all and your legislative delegation.
That's one thing, Mr. Hankins mentioned something, and I apologize. The timing of this meeting is the governor did not sign this bill into law until weekend before last.
Right.
Your regular scheduled city council meeting was last Tuesday. It certainly didn't give the legal, our legal staff enough time to bring this to you last Tuesday. That's why it's important to realize, even though the law was passed in the legislature in June, and Ellis helped me, the governor has how many days to pass the same laws?
Basically thirty.
And he took the entire thirty days here. That's why we are where we are tonight here, with the dilemma we're in in terms of facing a situation that's kind of fork and road here.
Right. Ellis, just to, I guess, curiosity, what was the major difference or the compromise of the original bill versus the one that actually came out?
The bill that passed the Senate, the statewide bill that passed the Senate last year, was very broad. It was not particularly well drafted, difficult to interpret, but it basically took away almost completely your authority to regulate sale of newspapers on or in state highways. The more, somewhat more narrow version that ended up passing, and that the governor just signed, it just became law, has an exception, says, "No local government may enact or enforce any ordinance that prohibits engaging in the distribution of newspapers on the non-traveled part of any street or highway." Question about what that means, the non-traveled part, "except when those distribution activities impede the normal movement of traffic on the street or highway." That exception at least allows our cities to do whatever they can do to prove that the sales activities are causing a public safety hazard on the street, but you have to go prove that in order to defend an ordinance and the enforcement of it.
Okay. Thank you.
So as I view, I'm just trying to talk out loud here a little bit, as I view this, if we proceed forward to enforce the ordinance that we have, we're going to get sued by the newspaper.
That's right.
If our ordinance and adopt what the state legislature has passed, then we have constitutional issues that we're going to get sued over there also, but by a different group, probably, some public interest group, probably the ACLU, for equal protection, because what you're doing here, you have an ordinance that addresses public safety, but you've carved out enforcement of it and...
Involved. I think they created the carve-out.
Yes, but we're going to be the ones that are going to be enforcing it.
I understand.
So as soon as we go out and we have someone, for example, a charitable organization, or someone just sitting there soliciting funds, begging, there's where they have their test case. We arrest them for violating the ordinance, and we'll wait back in court.
They're going to have to test the state as well.
Well, they don't necessarily have to. They can test us. They can test the state ordinance through us, if our language tracks the state language.
Our language tracks 2175 currently. Is that right?
Yeah, well, earlier.
With the exception... Earlier. This, and the, and that was sort of what gave us constitutional grounds to have the lawsuit dismissed. It was narrowly tailored, content neutral, and now that, now 2175's been changed. Is that correct? So it appears to me we just track that again.
But that's fine, but what I'm telling you is, is that that statute, if we turn around and track it, that statute has problems. It's the same thing that we were trying to avoid when we drafted it to be, now, obviously there's comfort in being heard with the crowd, but that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to avoid being the test case. And we are certainly on the radar screen, because these organizations, ACLU was aware of the federal lawsuit, and in fact, if you recall, there was some feedback that, hey, you know, you've done a good job of drafting an ordinance that is equally applied to everyone. I would expect that they would weigh back in and say, what you've done now is to turn around, and even though you've tracked the state, the language of the state statute, you violate it, and if you're going to enforce that, that's, you've got a constitutional problem. So I see us, and I just say this, I hope it doesn't happen, but I see us on the horns of a dilemma here. We're going to end up in litigation whichever way we turn, which then leads me to ask questions. And Ellis, if you don't mind, let me put you back on the hot spot, and I recognize you're not acting as legal counsel here, but just let me just ask you this. We have some indication of how a federal, how our local federal district court will rule here, but in my mind, when you go, if we're sued by the newspaper over a state ordinance, we're going into state court then. Maybe not federal court. When you go into state court, you've got the same political pressures there to bear. Let's face it, state judges are elected. They don't want to run afoul of powerful lobbies, any more so than state legislators do. And these appellate judges, not saying that they're not fair and even-handed about it, but are we not better off going into federal court when you have issues of constitutional issues to be interpreted?
That might be a discussion that you might ought to have with your city attorney, but now you're talking about my father-in-law, too, who is a Superior Court judge, nowhere close to here. The loss, the previous lawsuit was in federal court, partially on, largely on constitutional issues, and the federal district judge, as you know, denied a motion for a preliminary injunction that pretty much decided the lawsuit on the merits, and then the lawsuit was dismissed. And soon after that, the General Assembly comes along and muddies up the law with the statewide bill. If plaintiffs are in the future to file suit to challenge something that you have done in this area, I guess they have two choices. They certainly can challenge your authority, because at least the statewide law has changed. Your local act, I believe, has not. I believe it is still good authority, as I mentioned, but the statewide law has changed. That's one basis of challenge. If it's only that, that lawsuit is likely to be filed in state Superior Court. But you mentioned the constitutional issues, and you all know what those are, but basically, it's a selective enforcement claim, that if you allow newspaper sales, if you amend the ordinance, for example, to allow newspaper sales, consistent with the new version of the statewide law, but you continue to prohibit other sales, other solicitation, charitable or otherwise, then your point is that you potentially open yourselves to a constitutional challenge of selective enforcement, as an equal protection challenge. That could be, that constitutional challenge could be brought in federal or state court. Who knows?
Mr. Mayor, do you have something to say?
Do I have something to say? Yes, sir, thank you. I want to apologize for being late, but I think I did a pretty good job to come from Greensboro under the conditions that I had to come.
I took a break.
But, Mr. Mayor, I'm really disturbed, because we spent a lot of time, a lot of thought went into what we did. In such a short time, we're right here saying safety didn't mean a thing. Plus, we're going to get, I hear, thought of accepting something that's discriminatory. What would we say to the panhounds? What would we say to the church group, all those people who are not allowed to participate? What do you say to them? We thought we had developed something that would apply to everybody, and if we sued, we just have to be sued. You're going to be sued anyway, so I hear. So let's us please be sued for something that we feel within our heart is the proper thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
As been said, our ordinance was passed because of a safety issue. It's very difficult for me to understand selling of newspapers being less difficult than someone standing out there with a pot trying to collect money. If anything, probably it's a little bit more dangerous because you are receiving and handing somebody something. And they may won't change or whatever. So I think that, you know, and I don't think, well, I don't agree with the legislature that they carved out a separate entity, said that they could solicit, just like they could have passed the ordinance, said you can panhandle, but you can't sell newspapers. What's the difference? Difference is lobbyists. I kind of agree with Mr., my colleague here on my right, and so I just, I just think we ought to go ahead and do something with this.
You know, I'm not an attorney, obviously. And this thing gets more complicated every time. I think every day goes by, it gets more complicated. But I'm proud of the fact that in the lawsuit, because it was constitutionally viewed as being correct. And I think, I think I agree with Ellis that I don't like that freight train in Raleigh. When it starts coming, it starts coming. And obviously, they've weighed in and said they know more than we do about our local situation. And anyone's local situations, for that matter. And we didn't create that environment. They did. We studied this thing for a long, long time. I mean, it was on our retreat agenda. We studied it at work sessions. I'm proud of Bob's work and how we drafted this thing, how it tracked 2175. I'm proud of the fact that it was dismissed. But we're left to manage it. And we're left to try to figure out a way to operate through this, both to ensure the safety of our citizens and both to stay legally neutral and not put ourselves in jeopardy and waste money in frivolous lawsuits. I think we've completed all of our due diligence. But the one thing that we did is we tracked a general statute that was already there. And that general statute has now been changed. I don't agree with them changing it, but they did. And it appears to me that to put ourselves in a little bit simpler position, I had rather track that thing again and know that there's sort of strength in numbers, if there is such a thing, than to stand unilaterally and say, well, you know, we're going to do this thing completely on our own.
So what you're saying is you're thinking to repeal the ordinance and then rewriting another ordinance that would go hand in hand with the state law? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. I mean, we serve at the, we serve at the permission of the state. We govern what we do, whether we agree with it or not. And, you know, it may be incorrect now. It may be unconstitutional now on the state level. But the fact of the matter is, I'd rather fight the constitutionality of that because we piggyback the state, we track the state statute, than to fight something we do unilaterally. That concerns me.
Chief, I know we're not the only municipality in the state that has this problem. What are others doing?
We have been in contact with about a dozen other cities across the state that, like you said, are faced with the same dilemma. About half of those cities report that they were unaware of the passage of Senate Bill 942.
But Chief, the difference is, though, is that they, I'm only aware of one other. Is it a county or town that actually has enabling, local, enabling legislation like we have?
Durham County.
It's Durham County, isn't it?
I think that is the only one. That's in a unique position that we're in there. These other cities and counties do have ordinances regulating solicitation. But all of those we've spoken to so far, of the ones who were aware of the passage of this bill, had made no decisions as of yet as to how they were going to proceed. So that really gives us no help there.
I want to make sure I understand it. So we either enforce the ordinance, we do nothing with the ordinance, we repeal the ordinance, we rewrite the ordinance along what I said a few minutes ago about the state law. We possibly face a lawsuit with the newspaper. We possibility of facing a lawsuit with ACLU, or we do nothing and go back to the way it was. Is that, is that our options at this point in time?
I'm not an attorney here, but if you do nothing tonight, your ordinance stands--
I understand that part of it. I'm saying, I'm saying backing up, backing up, repealing the ordinance and going back to where we were to begin with. Hey, that's not an option, but is that, is that an option?
I agree it's not an option.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure all the options are on the table and make sure I didn't miss anything in taking my notes. So is that pretty close?
I think you're close.
Okay.
Mr. Ward, he spoke pretty quick there, but you think you get the, all the options on the table?
Well, I'll repeat that if you'd like. Do you need me to repeat that?
I think so. I've covered that pretty much in the earlier memorandum. I kind of like to leave it to that, at least from my perspective.
Let me, let me suggest, this is a lot to chew on here. One thing that I think that does come out of this, and I hope the, I hope the public understands that this city council is doing its best to address the issue of public safety. And we also, though, are truly aware of the political climate within which we operate. We are creatures of the state. We cannot do anything unless we are authorized to do it by either state statute or local enabling legislation. To that extent, it's kind of like the old game that we played when you were a child of, you know, of may I? You know, you always had to ask, may I? And then sometimes if you don't ask, may I, and you go and do something, you know, you suffer the consequences of it. We have done that by this local legislation. And there's one thing that I think that, you know, our situation may be different. I think we ought to have an opportunity to have some discussion with our local delegation, even though two of the three may have voted for the statewide legislation. I think we need to talk to them about problems that are, that we have right here in this town. Okay? And we need to have an opportunity to tell them and let them, I'm sure they saw some of the problems. We want to discuss with them because we may find that they're perfectly content with us continuing to have our own ordinance as it is written, based upon the enabling legislation and we proceed forward with enforcing it. Which adheres to our stated purpose and our whole goal all along was to enhance public safety. I think we need to give ourselves that opportunity to do that. At the same time, I think we ought to be conferring with our own legal counsel as to what options, because I feel certain that whichever way we go, we are on the horns of a dilemma. We're going to get, we, 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 the option of getting sued whichever way we go. And if that's the case, what issues are we going to be addressing in the two different sets of litigation or which way we go? Which court system will we be in? And with the goal being that we really would like to have an ordinance in place, to remain in place, enhancing the public safety that we have tried to address all along. So along those lines, let me just ask whether or not the council would consider putting a moratorium on the enforcement of our present ordinance for a period of sixty days or ninety days or something of that sort to enable us to have that conversation with our local legislative delegation as well as look at the options.
May I ask a question before you asked? You've already asked, and let me ask. Panhandling, what is that? How is that defined? What's the difference in that than selling the newspaper?
To my understanding, panhandling would best be described as offering something for sale when you're not licensed as a, have a business license to do that.
Offering something to sell?
Correct.
How are the people classified that make collections other than, for the various organizations in the community? What is that?
Charitable organizations, they're not considered panhandlers. They are seeking donations. But if they have been designated under the IRS code as a charitable organization, either under 501(c)(3) or (c)(4), then that wouldn't be considered offering something for sale without a license. That begins to answer the question.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Brown? I've got one other statement or question. I think it's probably important to understand this. I don't think we were put in this position from the state standpoint because of our local paper. I think this was already in motion. It just happened to be purely coincidental, the timing. Is that not correct?
Yeah. Well, I thought it's never been with the newspaper.
But just, I think publicly, maybe some people think that the paper put us in this position, and that's not the case with regards to House Bill 942. It was something that was dated back, and it just happened to be purely coincidental, the timing. I just want to be sure everybody's aware of that.
Well, one thing that Mr. Huffman's idea does do, I think that there could be repercussions down the road on certain ones of these that we take, certain approaches. And I don't, I think we all, I think we ought to be able to sit back and look at it and determine which fight do we want to get into. And I, and there are fights out there that are a lot bigger than this one. But I'm not saying that I disagree. I'm just saying maybe we ought to sit back and look and maybe we ought to look at all the repercussions.
Well, the repercussions are a little simple. I mean, basically, it boils down to a lawsuit with the newspaper, a lawsuit with ACLU.
There's more repercussions than--
Sir?
There are more than that.
Okay.
If you, if you do something that the legislature has--
Oh, I understand that. You're talking about fighting with the state. I understand that. I understand that. Good point. Does this conversation want to go public, or?
No, I'm just going to, I'm going to make--
Okay.
I wanted to give everybody an opportunity. If anybody was going to talk, speak.
Any other discussion or comments or thoughts? Now, Ms. Huffman?
Okay, I'm going to move that we put a moratorium in place on the enforcement of our ordinance for a period of ninety days. To give us an opportunity to confer with our legislative delegation as well as with legal counsel.
And our fear, I want to make sure I understand this as well. Our fear is that if we move forward, then in the '09 General Assembly, that someone will come along. Is it have to be someone in our delegation to repeal the 2005? Or can it be, it has to be within the Alamance County delegation? All right.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I really don't think it's a issue of really fear. I think some issues just need to be decided.
Sure.
And, you know, this, Mr. Ward is, by talking in terms of being sued if we adopt the state statute, I believe that's going to be, it may not end up us being in the fight, so to speak. But this issue will be heard somewhere around this state, I feel certain. At that point in time, I'm sure other, wherever it is, other cities will, with like ordinances, will wade in with amicus briefs and this sort of thing. So--
So let me interrupt you a second. So for ninety days, that means newspapers are being sold and panhandlers are back on the streets? Is that what that means?
What it means.
If that's what it means, then if we're going to seriously think about and consider all of our options, let's cut it back to sixty and let's be done as opposed to ninety. You said you're going to allow the people to-- That's the question I'm asking, for my interpretation and make sure I fully understand.
Let me ask the chief a question. If we did put a moratorium on this, currently, we're asking for permits to be issued. Should we not eliminate these permits for this period of time?
I think that would be appropriate, yes, sir.
Well, I mean, it's a safety issue. I don't want to issue somebody a permit to go out there and get hit, whether it's a newspaper or it's a panhandler, whoever. We're all God's children, and so. Okay, that was my question.
I want to make sure that since we had a little side conversation here, everybody understood that exchange. Okay? Let's go through that one more time. Your response was that, what again?
I think it would be appropriate to not issue any permits for people to be out there engaging in solicitation. As Mr. Starling said, that puts us in a position of granting a permit to someone, allowing them to be in a position which we have already stated we believe is unsafe. Puts us in a difficult position.
But if we add that to it, that's the only exception, back to where we were before, for a period of whatever, sixty or ninety days.
Yes.
Would you amend your motion, David, or not?
Thanks, man. I think now he's sixty-nine. It's not going to make that big of a difference. But we can address it before then, right?
We can bring it up before then. Just gives us, gives us some time. So he knows what he's-- Addends to the police department enforcement is concerned.
So he would know what the deal with police is. He would know.
I was looking at--
Chief Williams. Chief Williams.
That's the purpose of the ninety days.
I don't expect us to wait until the end of the ninety-day period if we can move. And I think we will be moving before then. Okay?
And you feel that we'll be able to get our representatives to sit down and talk with us?
For sure.
And change, and change their minds?
Well, I don't know that, they've never addressed simply our issue. Of course, they were the ones that passed our enabling legislation and threw it in the hopper back in '05. They might have voted for the statewide bill, but maybe they also understand our needs are a little different from the other cities in this state. That's why they voted for both, both measures.
Are you, are you willing to put, add to that eliminate these permits, David?
Don, I couldn't hear you.
All right. Are you willing to add to your motion that we eliminate the permitting?
During this moratorium period?
During this moratorium.
Well, may I ask a question? If anybody's injured out there, where would the responsibility fall? Where they have a permit or not?
David, you know, we didn't create this.
I agree with you.
We're doing the best we can and--
I agree with-- I agree with you, but I'm saying, what's going to happen if we have an injury?
Well, we certainly will not have been, having given somebody a permit to be out there during this 90-day period, so we wouldn't get, we wouldn't get tagged for trying to say that we deemed it to be safe out there.
But if you allow them to start back being out there and you have had your question there to the extent that you stopped them and you allow it to start back, what are you saying? It's safer now?
No, I'm saying we need some time to look at our options faced upon. The legislation that has been passed, and it's time for us to react.
There's not a whole lot of common sense in this whole scenario. It's just a lot of roadblocks that are, that are created by lots of different entities.
That's why I feel, Mr. Mayor, we need to, we need to stick to our guns and just move forward with what we have already decided. I don't know what in the world will be said in this 60 or 90 days, but not said in all those months.
David, I, it would give you, with your persuasive powers, conversations with our delegates in the legislature, which I know you will do on our behalf.
David, would you repeat the motion, please?
Oh, ask the clerk to read it by.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion to put a moratorium in place and enforcement of our ordinance for a period of 90 days to confer with the legislative delegation.
And eliminate the permit.
That was added during that period.
Right. And by us doing this, we feel that at the end of this 90 days max, whatever the timeline is, it could be 67 days, but we feel like that we're going to bring closure to this subject matter and move forward. On our part, maybe not somebody else's part, but on our part.
I think we ought to work as diligent as we can, close it just as soon as possible for everybody involved. For us, the state, the newspaper, the ACLU, and everybody.
Right. I would agree. And I have to say publicly too, since Mr. Taylor, the editor of the newspaper, is here, how much we do appreciate working with us in reference to last Sunday, knowing there was a conflict between the state law and our ordinance. So we do appreciate that very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
401. Which one is it? Any other business from the council?
Chief, you understand where we are.
I understand that for a period of 90 days or less, depending on what comes with these discussions with the delegations, that we are not going to enforce our ordinance as it stands. That's my understanding.
If it were not, we would not be issuing permits.
Right. Correct.
And also, we're going to try to respond to this as quickly as possible.
Right. Yes.
I just want to make sure we, you understand what you have to do, and then they got to understand what they've got to do.
Right.
We're all good on that.
I think we do.
Motion to adjourn.
Ellis, I just want to thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your help in the.
Motion to adjourn and a second.
Second.
Got a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
401. Which one is it? Any other business from the council?